Amen. Yes, Ms. Davis?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Y'all give a round of applause, because it takes a lot and courage to come up with a roomful of people to do what you did. Thank you, thank you. I have some council members that are afraid to do that kind of stuff right there. All right, um, I need approval of the May sixth work session minutes.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Approval of the regular council meeting for May sixth, twenty twenty five?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
We good? All right. All right, Ms. Mayor. We have some seats up front if someone needs to sit. All right, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right. Good evening, Mr. President.
Good evening.
With all members of the city council and all citizens, um, here, um, present at City Hall and those that are watching virtually. I would thank y'all for taking part in, uh, local government and thank you for, uh, your participation, uh, each and every day, uh, making this community better. Uh, I want to begin tonight's message with a brief financial update. Uh, very briefly, I want to provide a snapshot of what the city's financial position is projected to look like at the, uh, fiscal year end based on April thirtieth, uh, data. Uh, we're seven months into the current fiscal year and envelope tax revenue collections are at ninety-five percent, while business license revenue collections are at eighty-one percent of the budget. This revenue source would have reflected a higher percentage on April thirtieth. However, uh, due to some of our staff in the revenue division, still processing some of the data. We're working to get that addressed and to finalize that. Uh, since we have five months remaining in the current fiscal year, I'm optimistic that the city will collect additional revenue in both categories, albeit in small amounts, since the peak for collections was in April. Other than growth for total envelope tax and business license revenues is projected to come in slightly over budget. It will be offsetting other revenue sources that are projected to come in under budget. The budget to actual projections of revenue on the screen reflects growth of approximately two point four million dollars over budget, uh, at fiscal year end. Sales and use tax revenue is the largest revenue generator for the city's budget, nearly forty-nine percent. This revenue source, based on current data, is projected to come in at break even, while lodging tax revenue, revenue collection, excuse me, is trending five percent over the previous year, which is good for us. Uh, as we know, we have other hotels coming up, and so we expect those revenues to continue, uh, to increase even going into the next fiscal year. Uh, expenditures, though, in the current year, budget to actual, are projected to come in at about two point seven million dollars above break even, which is primarily due to attrition or unfilled departmental vacancies. Since total revenue is trending two point six percent higher than the same period in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, and total expenditures are projected to be less than budget, uh, budget for the departmental and non-departmental expenditures, it is projected that the city could add a minimum of two million dollars to fund balance reserve. Adding to the reserve will continue to keep the city in a good financial position. Uh, as mayor, I'm committed to increasing the city's reserves with no less than one million dollars each fiscal year. The higher our reserves, the better equipped we are to navigate through leaner fiscal years that we may have in the future. These substantial reserves also help keep the city's bond rating in excellent condition, which currently stands at double A. We'll do everything in our power to be good stewards of Montgomery's taxpayer dollars and continue to position our city for important investments and growth. Shifting gears, uh, as schools get out for the summer, I want to highlight some amazing programs that will be taking place at our community centers all around our city. Thanks to the outstanding work of our Parks and Recreation Department and many other community partners, our Montgomery Forward Initiative has boldly led to the renovation and reopening of a few of our community centers in recent weeks. Now, back over to the public, some of these centers, along with others across our city, are ready to kick off our annual summer program. The summer program costs about forty dollars per child, which includes lunch. It runs from June second through June twenty-fifth for children and teens ages six to seventeen. Theme weeks such as Animal Week, Sports Week, Nature and Dance, Food and Fitness, Water Week, and more will feature relevant activities and field trips across all age groups. By keeping kids active and inspired, these programs strengthen community ties and empower Montgomery's youth for a brighter future. Visit FundinMontgomery.com for more information and to register. Next, I would like to showcase an important contest aimed at moving our city forward. City Council has launched a citywide contest to redesign the municipal flag, a symbol that has gone unchanged since nineteen fifty-two. Open to residents ages thirteen and older, this initiative invites people to create a flag design that reflects Montgomery's evolving spirit, unity, and diversity. Participants must submit an original design, hand drawn or digital, along with a two hundred and fifty-word essay explaining its symbolism, ensuring it avoids ideological or discriminatory imagery. Entries are due by June the twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, and can be submitted via email, mail, or hand delivery to City Hall. This contest is a vital opportunity for Montgomery's citizens to shape a symbol that embodies their shared values, pride, heritage history, while fostering inclusivity and community engagement. Visit MontgomeryAL.gov for more information and join in to help redefine Montgomery's identity for future generations. I would like to thank the members of our Governmental Affairs Administration Standing Committee, Councilor Mitchell, Chair, Councilor Beard, and Councilor Riley, along with Booker T. Washington student Jeremiah Tracy, who has played an integral role in leading us to change. Thank you all again for your leadership. Thank you all for meeting and bringing this to the forefront. We look forward to this competition from those who live in our city. Now, I'm pleased to announce an important upcoming event that will shape the future of one of our city's vital corridors. On May twenty-ninth, from four thirty to seven thirty P.M., our Economic and Community Development Team will host a public information meeting at Smith and Presada Hall, located at fifteen hundred East Fairview Avenue. This meeting will focus on the East Fairview Avenue Streetscape Master Plan, which spans from Cloverdale Road to Narrowland Road. This initiative is a key component of our continued investment in infrastructure, connectivity, and community well-being. City staff and consultants will be available to discuss the project and receive public input. We want to ensure that residents, business owners, and stakeholders help guide this vision so that it meets both current needs as well as long-term goals. The proposed plan will enhance pedestrian and bicycle safety, strengthen connections between campus amenities and neighborhoods, and support local businesses along East Fairview Avenue. The city also recently received an award to which I would like to draw some attention. Leadership Montgomery recently announced the city of Montgomery as recipient of the Twenty Twenty-Five Organization Leadership Award, an honor that recognizes exceptional leadership, innovation, and community impact within Montgomery. Honor reads demonstrate outstanding commitment to developing leaders, fostering creativity and innovation, and improving the lives of others through inclusive and visionary efforts. With a focus on forward-thinking strategies, inclusive governance, and bold initiatives, the city has developed programs for youth and civic partnerships to empower residents to become change agents in their own neighborhoods. I want to personally thank all of our city's employees, as well as our city council, as well as those who serve on boards and authorities throughout our community for their tireless efforts to make Montgomery the best city it can be. We also want to thank the community for your support as we show up every day to move our great city forward in a positive direction. Thank you to Montgomery City Council President C.C. Calhoun, a member of the second best leadership Montgomery class, Class Twenty-One, for accepting this award on the city's behalf. And we look forward to many continued successes, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Now, we have some great, uh, special recognitions for a lot of champions, uh, in our city. So this is always a fun part of our council meeting and a fun part for all of us, as well as the parents, teachers, staff, coaches, and certainly, uh, the players who participate, uh, in bringing these trophies, rings, and medals back to Montgomery. So to begin, I want to first welcome the Montgomery Academy Boys Basketball Team.
Congratulations.
The Eagles, the Alabama High School Athletic Association three A state champions, rattled off a thirty-four to overall record en route to securing the school's first ever boys' basketball state title. Under the direction of head coach Jeremy Arant, M.A. Down, Lee Scott, in the regional final, Blenko in the Final Four, and Mars Bible in the state final. Please join me again in a round of applause as we honor the teamwork and perseverance shown by these young men. We're going to ask the council, uh, to stand up. Julie, you may need a stool now. These guys are kind of tall. We'll get a little picture in for the record books.
All right, congratulations.
All right, our second recognition of the night also highlights the Eagles, this time on the soccer field. Montgomery Academy brought home the school's first boys' soccer state title as it defeated Oak Mountain, the number-one team in the nation, to secure the A. A. Tennessee State Championship. Led by Coach Mondani, if I said that correctly, the Eagles posted a nineteen-five and two record and ended Oak Mountain's forty-nine-game winning streak and a sixty-game undefeated streak, dating back to the twenty twenty-three season. Join me again in another round of applause to celebrate the phenomenal accomplishments of this team for what they did in winning the state championship.
I want to see this group scrimmage against the basketball team.
Okay, tonight, I'm also proud to present a proclamation recognizing May as National Tennis Month in the city of Montgomery. Here in Montgomery, tennis holds a special place as it is home to prestigious, the prestigious Blue Gray National Tennis Classic, which brings together top collegiate talent from across the country and shines a national spotlight on our city. We commend our local tennis programs, coaches, and volunteers for their ongoing dedication in promoting physical fitness, mental wellness, and community spirit across all ages. Let's keep Montgomery moving, and please join me in a round of applause to celebrate this month. All right, and to round out this week's, um, this evening's message, we want to highlight National Public Works Week. I want to celebrate that and extend our deepest gratitude to the dedicated men and women of our Public Works Department who keep our city clean. Your hard work keeps Montgomery running from maintaining streets and sanitation services to maintaining stormwater drains, managing public facilities, as well as infrastructure. Off and behind the scenes, your efforts are essential to our daily lives and the safety, health, and quality of our community. On behalf of the city of Montgomery, thank you for all you do to keep our city clean, connected, and thriving. Please join me in a round of applause as we celebrate this hard-working group for all that they do. Mr. President, that concludes my message. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Any question for the mayor? Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Mr. President, thank you so much. Uh, Mayor, you forgot to add that May is National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month. Yes, um, Mr. President and Council, uh, Councilman Mitchell and I were able to attend the Alabama League of Municipalities Conference this, uh, month, and I was reappointed to the Board of Directors, um, to serve our city on the state level. So I'm very elated to pass that news on to the council. But last but not least, um, Mr. President, thank you for giving me this time. I wanted to recognize some individuals that assisted me in Sheraton Heights Community Day. It was very special. We reopened this community center and we reactivated this space. It's a key testament of what partnerships look like and what they should look like in the city of Montgomery. So I want to acknowledge some people, um, and as I call you up, please come up and receive this token of appreciation. Mr. Paul Davis, could you come up and help me? Mr. Davis was, uh, key in assisting me in making this happen. Uh, even in the rain, we had a huge turnout, and it was amazing. We had some star players with who I'll mention as we go through. So if Goodman Building could come up, Carter Goodman, please come up. And stand, stand, you said stand by, and here's your box. We'll take a picture with the council at the end. Renee Saintbank and Barbara Williams, she'll represent both. Please come up. We have two that are not here, DJ Ali and DJ Who. They kept us entertained as far as the music was concerned. Comedian DJ George. Okay, I want to go ahead and get my star players out. Um, Montgomery Fire Station eleven, Montgomery Fire Station five, and I think I have one more, Montgomery Fire Station number eight. If I can have some representation from the fire station to come up to receive these. And I want to mention why I called them my star players. They engaged in the community. They got their uniform shirts, kept their M.F.R. T-shirts on. They played basketball, they danced. They truly engaged in the community, and that's what it's all about when you think about public and private partnerships and our community and our first responders truly engaging in the community. So they did that. I appreciate you all. And Jennifer Thomas. Jennifer, Kim. Kim, can you come receive this for Jennifer, please? And this is, uh, Brandon was not able to be here, but I thank so much. I thank the Park and Recreation Department for what they do and what they continue to do in the city of Montgomery. Um, and Mayor stated that summer, uh, registration is open. Please enroll your kids, and let's get them active and engaged in something positive over the summer. Council, can we stand up and take a picture with these great people?
One more behind. All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
Any special committee's report? All right, Madam Clerk, item one?
Mr. President, before you as your consent agenda, items one through five, contracts for the council's approval.
All right, do you motion?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. And before we begin the whole business part, I received a mayor or veto of ordinance fifteen dash twenty twenty-five, and this, uh, I didn't receive it until after the agenda had already been set and published. So this needs to be voted on before any of the other whole business.
Okay, we have the veto before you, council explained, and we talked about the veto. I need a motion?
Move to uphold the veto.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, before we go to the next, we have a new ordinance. Ms. Blaylon, we go ahead.
Yes, sir. Ordinance authorizing President and Council to execute certain contracts.
All right, need a motion to suspend the rules?
Move suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted.
All right.
Now, to item six on the council agenda, this is actually in litigation, so it is moved at this point. Item seven, hearing on proposed ordinance for zoning property containing twenty-one point six to one acres at seven twenty West South Boulevard from a B-two district to an M-one district.
Okay, representative for item seven, please come forward. Public hearing. This is the public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor or against this item, please go forward. Center mic, sir. Your name for the record?
Cooper Nichols.
Okay. And you represent the property?
RT, yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. President, I did, uh, meet with them, and, uh, their hours of operation, you'll see, they put in the package, um, what they're reading from eight to five. That's why I wanted to make sure they had litigation operations to be, to post in this package. They will only be store manufactured items in that area. There will not be eighteen wheels or anything going out. Only, um, one to two employees will be over there, because we're so close to our area where we deal with, um, they have reported our gateway entries. So they are, um, willing to comply with all of the things that planning and everybody asked them to do, to make sure that we're in compliance.
All right. Okay, the public hearing has been held. The proper council need a motion? Ms. Riley?
Um, mo- motion to adopt?
Yes. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted.
Good luck with your business. Thank you.
Item eight, museum governance and operations agreement.
All right. We have a public hearing. Well, I have some people sign up to talk to me on item eight. Uh, Ms. Maskey on item number eight, Mr. Bill Ford.
Mr. President, before you get to this new item, I, I left off one piece from the police chief.
Okay.
Can he present that before you go into new business?
All right, we'll do that. Hold tight.
Okay, he just wants to, uh, Chief Gray, Gray always want to share your appreciation. All right, chief. This is supposed to be part of my message.
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
Last week was National Police Week, and that was a good week. We got to honor officers, of course, who had fallen, but we also got to honor officers who had really gone above and beyond, who had really made great headway in serving the city. But we all want to say thank you to this body, to the mayor, to, to the city, because we were able to recognize those officers for what they do this week, and we were able to, because of your all's support, because of the support of this administration, we were able to have not only an award ceremony, but a sneaker ball. So we just wanted to kind of play this video showing our thanks and appreciation of all that you all do and all that the, the mayor's office does in supporting us, because we can't do our job without what you all do. So thank you.
Our amazing mayor and our amazing elected city officials, our city council, who spared no expense to make this happen. So if you would, please, all of us join together for a round of applause to say thank you to our mayor, all of us, the council members, everyone who gave our contributions to an amazing county just like this. Thank you from the Montgomery Police Department. We really appreciate you.
Again, thank you all so much.
All right, thank you, chief. Thank you for what you do. All right, item eight, MOU, Mr. Samasky are on the, uh, agenda. Communication for this item, we have Mr. Bill Ford, Steve Russell, Brandon Barker, Chief Dustin, retired. we have Mr. Bill Ford, Steve Russell, Brandon Barker, Chief Justice, retired Sue Belkow, Winford Hawkins, Alex Novak, Carolyn Long, and I guess that's the remaining of the room after the basketball team is gone, that's why they... This meeting is adjourned. Go ahead, Mr. Ford.
Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you all, to address and advocate for the continuation of the public-private partnership and the governance of the Montgomery Museum of Fine Arts. Before I get into the meat of it, I would like to get a little wing beneath my wings. So everybody who's here to support the museum, if you'll stand and wave your hand, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay, okay, okay.
In addition to that, I just want to recognize the two gentlemen flanking me here, the esteemed gentleman flanking me here. Steve Russell is the eponymous founder and until recently head of Russell Construction Company and the vice president of the Museum Association Board. We are joined by Brandon Barker, a senior engineer and distribution manager at the Alabama Apparel Company, and a member of the City Museum Board appointed by City Council President C.C. Calhoun.
Great appointment.
Great appointment. These two accomplished professionals typify the spirit of cooperation and expertise that exists on both boards. Boards that are as diverse as any of their kind in the nation, and I am honored that both have chosen me to lead them. My journey to this position has been as incredulous to me as anyone. I'm an artist. It's not what I do is who I am. I came to it naturally because my father was an artist and an art teacher, art educator, who taught for over 30 years at high schools around the city. When I was 10 or 11 years old, he told me, "Son, I'm going to take you to your first museum visit." Unknown to me, it was on the occasion of the city allowing African-Americans to attend the museum on any day of the week and not just Wednesdays, which was the case prior to that. My excitement was quickly dispelled upon entering the building on Lawrence Street. The animosity was immediate, palpable, and demeaning. And to this day, I am ashamed that I was angry at my father, at him, my hero and role model, for exposing me to such a level of ugly animosity. I buried that memory deep in my psyche, and he and I never discussed it. And I realize now is because it was even more demeaning to him to be put in that position with his young son accompanying him. I didn't resurrect that memory until the day my murals were unveiled in the downstairs lobby of that building by both Mayor Strange and incoming Mayor Reed almost 60 years later. I thought about how proud my father would have been and how improbable might it have seemed to him, given the experience we shared six decades earlier. Even that irony was eclipsed when in 2023, my dear friend Laurie Will asked me to serve as her vice president on the association board. And now I stand before you as board president. I couldn't have imagined it, but somehow my father's presence instilled in me a love and reverence for the Montgomery Museum of Fine Art. A father showing a son the importance of art and this institution. So for me, MMFA is my Ebbets Field. It's my Madison Square Garden, my Augustin National, and my Cowboy Stadium because my dad took me there. Even as we suffered the slings and arrows of racial prejudice because this temple of fine art was important, and he wanted me to understand it. Racial prejudice because this temple of fine art was important, and he wanted me to understand it. And I am here to advocate and fight for its continued reverence, viability, evolution, and independence as an institution that welcomes every citizen of this city to celebrate the transformative power of fine art. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. All right, roll out one more speaker. Bill, it sounds like you hit a home run. Judge?
Thank you, Mr. President Calhoun, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I am Sue Belkow, and I am truly honored to be here in front of you to speak for the museum. As a member, as someone who took my daughter, who's here when she was a toddler, I'm just so proud to be here. But as you can imagine, having been a judge for 30 years and now retired, I get asked every so often to get involved in a case, to get involved in a cause, and I make it very clear to people who ask me that, that I only get involved if I really believe. I mean, I have to look at the situation, look at the law, look at the, and decide, do I believe? And that's why I'm here today, to address you about the crisis that is now involving our wonderful museum. You know, there's an old joke, and there's lawyers here that can tell you, the old joke is that if you've got the law on your side, what do you do? Pound on the law. If you've got the facts on your side, pound on the facts. If you've got neither on the side, you pound on the podium. But in this case, the museum, the museum governing board, and the association have both the law and the facts 100% on their side. I have reviewed the act, the act of the legislature that gave the permission and gave the authority to the city in order to form the museum board and basically establish its structure. I have read the deed from Wenton Blunt, Wenton Carolyn Blunt, with the three conditions, two of which the city is perilously close to being in breach of, which would mean the loss of the museum. And I have reviewed the MOU that was signed by a previous mayor in 2017 that the city is in conflict with and is now not operating in accordance with that MOU. I have reviewed the AG's opinion, which again says that the museum board and the association board can do what they're doing, which is a beautiful and effective public-private partnership. And that's how government is the best. It's not for the city council, and I know you don't want to, to micromanage the operation of the museum. I'm a little girl from Evergreen, and Councilwoman Johnson, I don't think I'm capable of doing that. But I will tell you that you have entrusted the right people with the governance and operation of the museum, and we need to let them work. The best way now for the city council to try to, let's go back, let's start again, and, you know, let's really start effectuating the agreements that have been in place, is to pass the museum governance and operations agreement. It has been sent quite some time ago. It's been discussed, it's been reviewed, and we need, the museum needs, the museum board needs, and museum association needs for that operations agreement to be passed. And when it does, what we are asking each and every one of you is to be vigilant about making sure that the city and its officials and employees live up to the governance and operations agreement. There have been many instances where issues have been shared and not resolved. There have been many instances of overreach where the city officials have not had the power, have not had the authority to do what they've done. Now, the association and everyone here, look at it, the people that love the museum, we're asking you, let us continue, let the board and let the association continue to do the work that they're doing on behalf of the entire city and region. What we were given by the Blunts in the 80s was simply like a miracle. It was like a miracle for a city this size to have that quality of art, which is owned by the association, and that building. Please, please work with the museum association, the museum board, and the association, so that we can again really perfect that public-private partnership and do the best to keep our accreditation, which we're perilously close to losing, and that we keep the building and its mission, and that is to provide the experience of art that improves the lives of us all. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the legality or any other comments that I've made.
Anyone have any question?
Thank you so much.
All right. But I don't have a question. I have a statement. That's, we only want to allow two speakers. That's it on the speakers. In reference, I don't see anything in this agreement that the council or the city is trying to undo. We're not trying to undo the board. We're not trying, when I read about the nine members of the board and to be appointed by the museum society organization, you know, there's nine members appointed by this council with two. But what I understand is we have those two serving on both boards. So what our proposal is, and I talked with Mr. Ford about this, and we can work through this, or how we get to this point, or how we move forward, is to create a 15-member board with six members coming from the society or the museum board to operate with the nine members from this council, to try to create how we go forward. And on the second page, it says, you know, I mentioned the statement was about, you know, the Blunts gave it to the city for the museum, and the city decides, we're not trying to take it and not trying to move it from anything other than a museum. So we're not in breach of that part of this MOU. So we're just trying, we put this off for a whole year, and this is where I'm at as the president of the council. We've been trying to work with all lawyers, been trying to work with the museum lawyers to come to an agreement. And you know how it is when you get a bunch of lawyers in there. So we're trying to get to a point where how we move forward, we want to keep the museum operating within the city of Montgomery, but we got to be willing to compromise on something. The museum is not going to get everything that they want. The city's not going to get everything. It's where do we meet in the middle, to keep this operation and this gem of a museum that we have in the city. And that's what we want to do from a council standpoint.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, Mr. President. But what I think the position is, and I think, and I'm saying to be corrected, is it's working. I mean, we've had lots of issues this past two and a half years since the loss of the executive director. But there have been a number of instances that have caused concern to the museum board and to the association. And what we have now, the structure we have now, is working. It's working, which means we can keep the certification and a premier executive director that can raise money, that can convince other museums to send us wonderful, you know, exhibitions, I mean, can do the things that we need to do. Because, you know, the museum, it's not about politics, right? I mean, this is, that's why the museum board, that's why the legislation was passed, is that it's supposed to be above politics because it's for everyone. It's for all of us. It's not for nepotism. It's not for, you know, trying to give some favorite person a position. It is to get the best, the best person who can ensure that this amazing asset of the city continues to grow and be relevant. I don't know if y'all saw the Spider Martin exhibition. It was so moving. I mean, it was so moving. And you could just keep going back and back to all the different things the museum has done. So I, we want to work with you. We do. But there are a lot of folks, and this is going to sound like the Evergreen in me coming out, okay, because that's where I'm from, is if it ain't broke, right? If it ain't broke, it's not broke.
Well, how we get to this point?
I'm sorry?
How do we get to this point if it's not broke?
How?
I'm asking. I don't know, you know, but it came before the council, so we didn't know what was going on. It was something that was brought before us. I put it in committee, asked that everybody work together to come, to keep the politics out of it. But now it's before us, so it's political. Not political in the standpoint where we're asking to be vote, we're asking to vote on the MOU. If the MOU is already in place, why do we need to change it if it's not broke?
Well, the MOU was fairly, I don't, this is not a real good legal term, but skimpy. So the one that was, that was written in 2017 did not encompass everything. It didn't spell everything out. There were a lot of, you know, parts that could have been mentioned. Like, for instance, that MOU that Mayor Strange signed did not have, it didn't mention the museum board. It should because it's really a, I'm sorry, Bill.
I just wanted to interject here. The Attorney General's opinion clearly states that the city museum board is a governing, overriding governing authority. The last contract that we sent you was actually generated and sparked by comments from Brandon Barker, who's a city museum board member. The city museum board voted unanimously to approve the contract that we sent. So the city museum board already is a governing authority.
Okay.
And the law states that two members of the association board have to be on the city museum board. It's not our intent to do anything to impinge on the authority of the city museum board. But that nine-member board is the overriding authority. And frankly, since the last time we came to this council, to the chambers, and the resolution was struck down, and we were, the alternate was approved, the city museum board has not been consulted on anything. Nothing. So that's why we're here. Not because of something else, but because the city museum board has not been given the authority to govern the museum as stated by the Attorney General's opinion and as affirmed by the former chief justice of the Alabama Supreme Court.
Mr. President, this is why we're doing this today, is because we want to take the recommendations that we have, the unanimous agreement that we have from our city board, also independently done by the association board, as I understand, to move this process forward, which has essentially, you know, been hung up. Now, they've done everything right to this point on both sides. We have the AG's opinion, which helped to inform the final versions of what was adopted inside here, and addresses some of the governance and partnership issues between these two entities. We, as a council, continue to appoint people to this board to be our authority and our representatives to make decisions to the city's museum board. And in many other cases, we're deferring to the opinions of those people that sit on boards, whether it be the Architecture Review Board, or the Planning Commission, or the museum board. And really, at this point, I think it's more of a question about why do we need to wait to move this thing forward? There, we have spent a year dancing with the threat of loss of accreditation to something that everybody on this stage, I think, would agree is a crown jewel and a treasure of the city of Montgomery. That changes the moment that accreditation is lost, and we cannot afford to have that happen. So, hold on, hold on. No, I don't.
All right, all right. We're going to clear the room. We're trying to have a decent conversation on how we move forward. We don't need all the clap and our, I understand you're passionate about what you're doing, but let's have some decency in order while we speak about this.
So all I'm going to say, Mr. President, is that based on this, and this has been something that has been discussed, I know every one of our appointees to the board have voted to move this thing forward, the association has moved this thing forward, we have plenty of opinions that say that this thing meets the input that came from the Attorney General, and we need to move this thing forward.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Samasky. I don't think we're moving forward tonight, because what I'm saying, the lawyers have been, I mean, we're talking, we understand the passion. Me and you talked about this as we move forward with what we suggested about increasing the board. And I know it might take an amendment from the state legislature to do that, but I understand from our legal team, we don't. And we're just trying to create a board, because I really don't understand how it got to the city council. I really don't. And I know, we've been talking about this for a year, for a year, and we're... And I know, we've been talking about this for a year, for a year, and we're still here. So if we can't come together on agreement how we move forward, you know, passing this is not going, not going to help anything, because I don't understand, where's the breakdown?
The breakdown has been, I think, that certain city staff has gone onto the museum property and has undertaken actions without contacting the museum board president, without contacting the association or the museum board, and has inserted herself in dismissing, telling association employees they couldn't come into the building after five, which has not been any decades that that has not been the practice, because the association by law can have employees, they are hired for specific projects, you know, that come in. So she did that, she fired a vendor without authority. They, the city has announced for, to hire a museum executive director, we appreciate that. There's a desperate need for the museum executive director to be hired, but the problem's been, the city doesn't have the authority to do that. The city is given their authority to hire to the museum board. The museum board makes the decisions about who they hire, and then by law, you are given the authority to say yes or no. That's all. It's not to pick the person, it's not to announce that these are the credentials and this is what's required, and this is the job description. That responsibility belongs to the museum board. And so there's a violation there. There's maintenance issues. The city has been repeatedly told for about three years about maintenance issues. Something as simple as a railing on the, I call it a patio overlooked in the lake, that the city hasn't fixed, that's kept that space from being used by the public and kept that space from being used by the association to make money in order to help support the museum. The air conditioning handle, the humidity, that the city has been repeatedly told about maintenance issues that have not been resolved. So, have there been issues? Yes. But, and this, hold this on me, not on anybody else. The only mistake that the museum board and the museum association has made is not being forceful enough. They have tried to work, they have tried to cajole and plead and notify and do everything they know to do, but if the city staff and city employees, which are under y'all's, you know, your responsibility.
No, no.
Undermine that, undermine that, then, you know, what do they do? And so that, there are multiple issues, you know, everybody would be happy to sit down with you or whoever else and try to go through piece by piece, because it's not one, it's not two, it's not three, it is multiple issues where there has been interference by city staff and city employees who did not have the legal authority to interfere.
All right, thank you for that. Thank you, Chief Justice. And I think that's what we need to do, is sit down and figure out the way forward. The MOU is not going, I don't think we'll change that, if we're going to still have interference. We need to understand the roles of what the council plays. We appoint the board members, we don't run the day-to-day operation, we don't get into city employees going back and forth, that's not our role. Once we appoint the board members, we allow them to do what they do as board members that represent each one of us that sits here. So that's what I think we need to do. I don't want to rush to it, and like I said, we've been working with this for one year. And this is the first time I'm hearing these type things. And so now it's out in the open, now we need to figure out a way that we rectify this as we move together, as a unified unit, to run the museum. And so that's what I'm thinking about, that we just brought this to the table, let's figure out how we go forward.
All I can tell you is, is that everyone I have talked to involved and so concerned about this issue does not want a delay. They feel like that they have been put off and put off and put off. There were five appointments made with a certain staff person of the city, and she never showed up for any of the five. So it has been, they have literally, I have never seen a bunch of volunteers, and I've been in a lot of C3, C4 at organizations, that are this dedicated and concerned about the city. They see it slipping, and because of the, you know, just the inability to get on the same page. So we really don't want it to be continued. We would love it for y'all to vote on it tonight.
And, Mr. President, I do think you made the point about, you know, we have the people in our board as our authorities, who have made this recommendation to us to adopt an MOU that spells out and clarifies the issues of governance in between the city board and the association board. Now, I think the recommendations being unanimous especially give way to the fact that they're, you know, we've gone through this process, I've sat in committee meetings, you and I have talked about this many, many, many times. This is where we are at, as the recommendation, as an MOU, and I think time is just going to cause us to find more nitpicky ways to hold this thing up than it is to move this thing forward.
Okay, I kind of disagree with that, but that's just my opinion, so we didn't have the discussion on this. Me and you had an agreement that we was going to table this for two weeks.
Yeah, we had a discussion about tabling this for two weeks, because we wanted to, we wanted to give time to our association and our city board members to evaluate a counterproposal that came in again, and I'm just.
And the counterproposal is in, but had no one evaluated.
I know, I know.
So it hasn't been sent, we just talked with our city attorney to send that to the board, the association board, to evaluate what the proposal was as we make the change move forward. That hadn't been evaluated by the board.
That's why.
Because it was just sent tonight, today.
Right. But that was the problem, that's the problem that we have here, and that's why I want to make sure that we're not amending this thing, and we are looking at, you know, potential changes to the agreement down the road if we need to.
Mr. President, I mean, Mr. General.
I'm going to spend rules.
You don't have to spend the rules, because it's not a resolution or, it's just a motion to adopt.
So what are we adopting?
Mr. Cal, I think what Mr. General is going to do is make a motion to adopt what we have, the contract agreement, the MOU. And as you said a minute ago, we have kicked this thing down the curb forever and ever. And I'm not as cultured as I should be, but I, like CC, have no idea how we got here, but I know that you said, Judge, exactly what I wrote down and showed Andrew, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So, I mean, let's pass it and move on, we got other fish to fry than to worry about this, and let them run the museum and run it how it's been run since Noah built the art. So I'm going to make a motion to adopt.
Okay, hold on. Hold on. We can adopt this, and like I say, I have a dog in the fight, I want the museum to move. We can approve this right now, adopt this, this MOU, but it has to be signed by Mr. Ford and Mayor Reed. So we're entering into an agreement that we don't have organizations to sign, so we're still going to be at a standstill on how we move forward. If we have issues with the administration going in and making those moves, that's something that has to be addressed at the mayor's level, not at the council level. So we could sign this and approve it to make everybody feel good, but how do we move forward? I want to see how we move forward to make the museum work to be the best museum in the nation. But we're at a standfast right now, who's going to be in charge, who's going to run the museum? The board is appointed to help to give the direction to the new director on sending the bylaws, it's like we set ordinance within the city on how we govern the city. So the board can do that, but if we're not going to be in agreement on the, the city still owns the property. So when I heard we saying we need rail something else, so we're going to give the board authority, or the boards will come there financially to help with some of these financial things that the city of Montgomery has, or we just going to give the authority to run the board, to do the things that we want, and the city takes care of all the maintenance, the agreements on everything, whatever we need to do is for the maintenance goal, and we have no say-so? I'm not against what this MOU said, I'm like, how do we figure out how we go forward? And I talked with you, Mr. Ford, two weeks ago, and by the compromise that I was willing to talk about, we're moving on. I'm just one vote. I'm just one vote.
Well, with all due respect, that was Thursday, this past Thursday, wasn't it two weeks ago?
Tuesday, or the last week. Thursday.
And, Mr. President, the question is, is how do we hold, how do we hold, where's the accountability level to actually get this thing moved? And now, you know, if passing an MOU that shows the city council's potential support of this agreement as a way to continue the conversations, to up the ante on the conversations, that's one way, but if you were saying that there is, there is going to be conversation about it, we have been talking about this for a very long time. The AG's opinion came out in November.
No, we haven't been talking about it, Mr. Samansky, the lawyers have been talking about it.
The boards have been talking about it.
It's come to us for a long time, CC, it's been coming to us for a long time.
Mr. President, Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on.
I think we ought to hear from our city attorney about what we're entering into and what risk it puts the city in front of.
All right, Ms. Bell.
We've discussed this, like you said, for a year or better, and you asked for an AG's opinion, we got an AG's opinion. The city ordinance, the state law that created, that the ordinance is based on, authorizes the city council to appoint a nine-person board. That nine-person board is supposed to govern the city museum. The problem is, we haven't had a nine-person board governing the museum. We've had an association board that absorbed the city board governing the museum, that's not what the law allows. So what you and I have discussed, and what's been sent to Raleigh-Robey, is proposing to expand the board and allow advisory members so that everybody can be at the table. It's also a self-perpetuating board, meaning as those terms expire, the board nominates the new members to take the place of the expiring member, and the city council then verifies those members, they confirm them. So that takes the politics out of it that everybody is concerned about, that takes the city out of this complete role. The reason there have been city individuals at the museum is because there until a few months ago, has not been a city board to direct anybody. And we don't have a director, so in place of the director is a city employee, the director supervisor on the org chart. That individual has been out there doing the best she can to help govern the museum and keep it up and running. So there's frustration across the board, but this MOU is a joint governance agreement, which takes us back to where we were before. You asked how we got here, that's how we got here. They came to us with this governance agreement that again gave the association the authority over the governance, which was specifically designated to a city-appointed board. Can the association consult, advise, and be advisory? Absolutely. I've encouraged that from day one. But they cannot be voting members, they want to create subcommittees in which the association board and the city board have equal membership on an executive committee that governs the museum. That's not the purpose of the state law.
I just would like to ask council members here, are, do any of you, did all of you appoint a city board member to the city board?
Mr. President.
Are there any vacancies?
Mr. President, I don't think the city attorney was finished.
Go ahead and finish up this, and I'll come back to you, Mr. Ford, go ahead and finish up this.
The concern I have is if the MOU is passed tonight, there are going to be demands made by the city board that I don't think are allowed by law, and I have concerns that we're going to end up in litigation, which is going to again prohibit us from getting a director appointed and getting this accreditation we're all so concerned about. Will we have an answer finally as to the governance and state law and what's allowed? Yes, but to what, to what end? When we provided a proposal, and if we extend this a couple of weeks, I would hope that Raleigh and I can actually have a conversation about the proposal and come to some agreement.
So what happens in two weeks if we don't come to an agreement? What happens? We pass it and go to court, or we deny it and go to court?
The city council makes a decision.
All right, Mr. Ford, you had something you want to come in on?
I just, I was wondering, she said there was no city board, and I was just wondering why it was, all nine council members have an appointed board member. There was one vacancy, and Counselor Mitchell disappointed Michelle Somers to be his representative. And so I'm confused, the city board has been fully staffed and manned ever since I've been associated with the museum. So I don't know how an assertion can be made that the city board did not exist. After the last time we came here, and the city board was affirmed to have the governing authority, the city board has not been consulted on one thing. Now, I was elected president of the city board, nobody said anything to me, I didn't see anything come across my email or my desk that questioned or even asked to consult the museum board, let alone the association board, on anything in the last two years. After the resolution was defeated, it has appeared that that resolution that was defeated was instead passed, because the city museum board has not been consulted on one thing. I'm not talking about the association board, I'm talking about the city museum board, which the attorney general has stated has the overriding governing authority. So I'm at a loss, I'm at a loss for the assertions being made, because the city museum board has not been consulted one time.
So there's two weeks then, to the next city council meeting, where there is going to be some, I hope, some kind of consultation.
No, not, I hope it will be.
It will be. It's going to come up on the next agenda, in this form, unless, and I would check in with all of our city board appointees in the next two weeks as this discussion moves forward, to see what their recommendation is. Currently, it is for this MOU. If there is no change to this in two weeks, we voted up or down as part of our old business. If there is changes that come to us, and our representatives tell us that they is good and positive movement going forward, but we, next meeting will be one year. So, Mr. President, I'm going to carry the server to the next meeting.
All right.
Mr. President, withdraw your motion to adopt.
Mr. President.
I mean, it's a consensus of the guy that's sponsoring, so.
Mr. President.
I know, you can make a motion, but I want to understand, hold on, we're not arguing.
But I can make a motion.
You can, you can.
I have a question, Mr. President.
Ms. Bell.
Yes, Judge, you mentioned some timelines there, about accreditation timelines and some else, something else, I didn't write that one down. Can you give me dates, please, when that accreditation and the timelines that you discussed?
The, if, I'm not quite sure, but one of the things that was important was that what was presented right here was sent to the city attorney over two weeks ago. So she's had it now for two weeks. So all of this discussion, which we understand why there might be a desire for it, there's, we had two weeks to do it.
Right.
But the deed itself says that once the city council is notified of the, of a breach, which is failure to maintain or failure to, you know, comply with the deed, once they're given notice, you have ninety days to cure that breach, otherwise then the museum would revert.
So ninety days, that was when you would lose your accreditation?
I'm not positive, but.
Lose the property and accreditation of the.
So, the museum was last re-accredited in 2019.
That's what I'm getting at.
And the 2019 accreditation of the Montgomery Museum of Fine Arts is based on the 2017 MOU that Chief Justice Cobb referred to, that represents the way that our organization works. So AAM's guidelines on joint governance say you must clearly outline the duties of the entities, in our case, the city and the association. And our organization works the way it does, because the association founded the museum in 1930 and owns the art, and then the city and county began the wonderful generous support. And so that is why it was accredited the way it was and when it was, and I can send you all more information on the seven core standards of accreditation and how we're not meeting them currently. Thank you for your support and for your work.
Ma'am, Mr. President, can you state your name?
I'm Alice Novak, and I've worked at the museum for seventeen years.
City employee, you're, you're a city employee?
I was a city employee for fifteen years, and some of that time I also received a stipend from the association, and for the past few years, I've been paid exclusively by the association.
Okay, and I think Ms. Blaylock asked for your name one more time.
I got it.
You got it?
Alice Novak.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So it's a consensus of the council, the carry is over for two weeks?
Right.
All right, this item will be carried over for two weeks. Thank you, thank you for your time, appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nine.
Hold on, hold on. Mr. Ford, keep me in the loop on how we. Hold on, Mr. Ford, keep me in the loop on how we set up these meetings going forward. I got time over the next two weeks to meet and see if we can push this on down the road.
I will, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody leaving at this time? We'll allow you guys to leave before we continue to meet. I'm ready, Ms. Blaylock, next item.
Item nine, ordinance amended section 25-71 of the Code of Ordinances charges regarding.
You want to speak on item nine? Hold on. No, we're on item nine. We're on item number nine. All right. All right, we have item nine, Mr. Dunson, Patrick, you want to come up on this item? You read it already, right, Ms. Blaylock?
Yes, sir.
All right, Counsel, you heard the explanation of what the increase on the sanitation fees was all about. We had questions in the work session, so are there any questions for the regular meeting on the proposal for the increase on sanitation?
I'm ready to vote, Ms. Rose.
And I know this item has asked to be carried over. A couple of council members want to be able to get this out to the extension. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure we had any questions before we carried this item.
No, sir, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, there's a motion to suspend the rules. All right, no motion to suspend the rules, so this item be carried over.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Item 10, ordinance authorizing third amendment to the funding agreement with Montgomery County Community for District regarding Whitewater.
Counsel, I gave explanation for this ordinance in the work session minutes. We had some concerns about it, so I'll ask for motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Five.
All right.
I'll pick your hands up just a minute.
That's nine?
No, sir, it's not nine. It's still five.
Hey, Mr. Calhoun, can we get somebody to come?
I need the others' votes, are you?
All opposed to the suspension of rules, please raise your hand.
No, sir, I need to know the no votes, well, this is.
Well, they both are suspending the rules, so they're no.
It'd be a no vote, yes, sir. I'm with you, ma'am.
All right, so.
Can we get some people to come and speak to us, Mayor, from the Whitewater people looking at their org chart and stuff?
They've had, they've had some changes and they've made some adjustments, but I'm sure they'd be open.
Yeah, I'm calling, I just got a text.
You see what you got this afternoon? Everybody got a set of, this afternoon, thanks to your, so you didn't look at the email you got this afternoon?
Yeah, we'll set something up within the next seven days to talk about it, and away for.
And Mayor, just so you know, we talked about this this morning in the work session, the board that Whitewater has, you know, Charlie, we were all talking, I think we've put in about 40 million almost, from start to finish, right? Either through land or cash, and we need some people at the table as well. If we're going to help continue to try to make this thing work, we need, we need whoever it is from your office or the council, doesn't matter, but seats at the table for that.
That's no problem.
I think, I think you're on point, Ms. Ford, and the council's on point. I just want to make this statement. We're not saying no to Whitewater, we're just trying to get an understanding on how we move forward, whether it be a budget line item as we move forward, to try to see what a true partnership looks like with Whitewater and Montgomery County. We have to create these partnerships, not just for Whitewater, but other things that we're trying to do within the city. And as I said in the work session, you know, the baby's here, so we got to figure out how we take care of this baby. And I understand the council has questions about how we move forward, and I commend you for having those questions. So we need to get those questions answered because we have to be good stewards of the citizens of Montgomery money and how we go forward with that. So I don't have an issue with that, I put it on because there was a technicality on how we issued the money to Whitewater, so that's why I was there, so the questions came up concerning the email that we received today, and we have the right to get those questions answered before we move forward. But thank you. Next item?
Item 11, ordinance amended section 6-4, parentheses A of the Code of Ordinances.
Motion to suspend rules?
Hold on just a second, I have a movement.
Oh, oh, hold on.
Okay, go ahead.
Hold on, Ms. Blaylock.
Yes, sir.
I think we had discussion in the work session. This is about trying to identify these conference center.
Yes, sir, but that is the whole section. I picked the sentence, Bob, if you'll look at your ordinance where it says 6.4A, you'll see that is the line that follows right after that. That's where that came from. It's, I think it's further down in it that the amendments are made.
So we're saying if we pass this tonight, we can come back and rescind this total? Or, because I think the confusion is on conference centers and event centers and conference centers. You know, there's a loop around where everybody wants to open up a conference center when no one is paying taxes with a conference center. You know, we're not receiving any revenue because it's a rental hall. We don't know when it's being rented out, you don't rent it out, you don't have to bring news type issue before the city council. So we can't collect the revenue. So, you know, we voted on it a year ago, I think it's something that we have had a chance to evaluate. It's not the right thing to do in the city of Montgomery because we understand what's going on with this. We're smart enough to know what the citizens are doing. It's not to go to the ABC board, not to come and say, I want a business license or a club license or a lounge license, it's saying, I want a conference center. We understand a conference, we had that conversation. A conference is to gather the people, to do whatever. So that's what's happening in the city of Montgomery. So what I want to understand, if we pass this ordinance tonight, my hope is to rescind the whole deal about the conference center.
To amend this, there would have to be another ordinance amending this one or either repealing this one and adopting.
The word is repeal.
Repeal it just for a sec, so Mr. President.
Hold on, let me let Ms. Stacy speak on it before we move forward. Go ahead, Ms. Bell.
Well, the concern right now is the fact that we currently have conference centers. And if we, if we repeal it, then we don't have anything that governs the current operations of conference centers.
And we don't need it now, we don't, we don't now. We don't, we don't govern it now.
I understand what you're saying, and it would be very helpful, number one, to know how many conference centers we're dealing with. Unfortunately, we just don't have that information. Because of that, it's hard to say what the impact would be if we just repeal it and tell everybody who has a conference center license, you know, are we going to revert it to a rental hall? If so, then they have to get an ABC license, how long do they have to do that? I think that piece has to be figured out. And I wasn't at the last interdepartmental meeting, I had an attorney who attended. But I don't know if that piece was resolved.
So, Mr. President, that's what I've been trying to state for, since work session. During the intergovernmental meeting, the discussion was, we were talking about how many conference centers we had. Bob was to pull the information for the next meeting. We know it's less than 12 that are, because it's only been almost a year now about the conference center. So we know it's less than 12. But if we enact this ordinance, what it gives us and the police department's ability to do is enforce. So if they're open after hours, now we can go back and now we can see who are actually operating as a nightclub or rental hall, and we can enforce the law. And now we can carry them back to the drawing board, and now they can, they can either reclassify as what they actually are and pay those back taxes, or we revoke their license. But this is the only meet that we had through this discussion, through all the departments, that will give us the enforcement ability if we put this in place.
And to add to that, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Ms. Blaylock.
There were several of them, they, we have gotten reports of where these conference centers are being opened until 2:00 and possibly 4:00 in the morning. So that's what they were trying to take care of.
Okay, change the hours of operation, so you identify a conference center, okay. But that, I think that's what Chief Grabos and Deputy Chief Hall was talking to us in the work session. We have to identify those things in order to enforce it. But if we don't know where the conference centers are located, you can't enforce it. Because, you know, we need to know who owns a conference center. So if you put the hours of 11:00 o'clock, and I don't know that you're operating a conference center at 111 South Perry Street, how do you enforce the law?
So that's a good question. So with that being said, Bob, that list of however many, the ones that have applied, from the time we enacted this ordinance to today, we need a list of those ones. So when we get these flyers and all these different things, we can use them, but if you go out to the place and the parking lot is full, it's 11, it's 10:31, now they're in violation of this ordinance. And that gives the police department ability to go in and enforce that, and the fire department, the ability to go in. So that's why we need this. So if we can just do this for now, and Bob sends out the list.
Okay, I'm going to say this, if we can vote on it. You know, we did something with these conference centers a year ago in the committee. We wanted to be sexy and cute, and now it's facing us right now, and we don't know how to fix it. But we have a motion on the table, motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous?
Motion to adopt? All in favor, please raise your hand.
No, sir, you can't make the motion.
Oh.
And we're ready to vote, motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous?
No, 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 five did not vote. I'm vote no.
Four is also, four vote no.
Four voted no, it's going to be six with two no's.
So now we got to enforce it. Good luck.
Mr. President, before we move on, I just want to make sure, so if we have these convention centers that switch over to an event center, do we have the same operating hours? So in the city of Montgomery, you know you can stay open almost until the next day. So I just want to make sure if I have a convention center and I switch over to an event center, I can operate all day long. So that's what I'm saying, we are, we are going back, we did all this four years ago. Now we're reversing everything that we did four years ago because we said that we weren't going to do a event center which in 20, what, 250 yards of each other. We reversed that. We said we want, we were reversing, we said we weren't going to do a brown bag, BYOB. So what they're doing now, they don't have to have alcohol, they can bring their own liquor in there. So we have reversed everything we did for the last four years.
Mr. President, I just want to point out that what we needed was a temporary, at least a fix until we can figure out how to handle this situation. And especially because I, you know, we have been calling on some of these conference centers. The one that's about to come up on the agenda right now, you know, I talked to MPD, I talked to people in the city, and they said there's nothing that we can do about it because there's nothing that's saying that they cannot operate. And the fact that they're opening, a lot of these places are opening up and operating at 4:00 a.m., at least we have something for the known places where we're having these issues right now.
All right, thank you. You have what you wanted, so we're moving on.
Item 12, resolution supporting the reconnecting communities grant award from U.S. Department of Transportation, $36,663,000 for West Montgomery.
All right, any motion to suspend the rules on the resolution?
Mr. President, we talked about it in work session, but I want to make sure that they emphasize and put it back out to what we talked about in work session. So who did we use to talk about?
Need a motion to suspend the rules?
No, I want to talk about it, Mr. President. It's important that the citizens know what we're doing and why we're doing it at the same time.
Explain it.
I'm going to let one of them come up and speak about it again. I mean, this is business, we need to take care.
What's happening right now, the grant for $36 million on connecting the communities in the west side that we got from the Department of Transportation is being, being put on hold because of DEI from the current administration. So this resolution is only asking that the council still support that we received at 36.6 million dollars. It's a resolution that we were sent up, that's not going to say it's going to hamper. We know what happened with the new administration, they're pulling back on some of these grants. That's what we're asking as a council. So I explained that, so can I get a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Keep me rolling here, let's go.
Item 13, resolution setting a share cost hearing as to why the business license should not be revoked for precise conference center at 546 East Patina.
Mr. Semasky, representative for Precy.
No, sir, this is not the hearing, this is setting a share cost. And it will be in July.
Okay.
Do you know that?
No.
I forgot that.
The last meeting in July.
He's slipping, man.
This place is never, this place is never ending.
Okay, need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt? All in favor, please raise your hand.
No, sir, you can't do it.
Motion to adopt.
They're too slow. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Item 14, application for a business license, doing business has unique smoke shop, and he has requested this be carried over because he had to be out of town, in fact, the council as well. Counsel, all right, we're carrying it over to the next one. Item 15, application for a mobile transport venue with alcoholic beverages, doing business as Thompson's Drink and Eatery in Montgomery, with no physical location.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item or for this item, please come forward.
No, sir, it's not public.
It's not?
No.
Okay, application, okay, my bad. All right, your name for the record?
Alicia Thompson.
All right.
And I'm going to need an answer from ABC if they need to make an application for a liquor license for food truck, or to come before the council for your approval. This is brand new, this is going.
We need to carry this over.
It's one here already, you have one, application from the ABC board.
You filed one with our office?
Yes.
Okay, what are you scheduled for today?
Oh, it never scheduled.
It never scheduled because I think we had to get the substitute that.
She's made an application for a business license, but I don't have an ABC liquor license, is what I'm saying.
I sent one in to Mary.
Gallagher? Okay, so has she not gotten back to you and scheduled you? Okay, then it will probably be. I don't know if it will be the January 3rd, or the January 21st.
July. June. June or July?
June, met June. But anyway, that was my concern, but she's just answered that, so it's going to be a second one coming for the liquor license.
Okay, so Ms. Blaylock, on the amendment for chapter six on the application for food truck license.
Yes, sir.
With the, to be able to serve alcohol.
Yes, sir.
So we need to vote on that before we vote on 15?
This will not go, actually won't go into effect until it's advertised.
Okay.
That's the catch-all. I mean, y'all can adopt it tonight, but until it's advertised, it doesn't go into effect.
Okay, I'm ready to move forward on it. So we going, what we doing on, need a motion, did we get a motion to suspend the rules on 15?
No, sir, not yet. Do we want to move on this one, or are you going to wait till the end?
She's done anyways this time.
Hey, I'm going to go ahead and move it exactly the way it's saying.
She's all over town.
Got my paper everywhere. All right, so we have motion to suspend the rules on 15, all in favor, please.
Well, hang on, Cece, let me make sure, this is not a mobile food truck bar.
No.
She's a bartender, and she goes place to place.
It's mobile, so this is one of those gaps that we had, kind of like when we have a barista and they serve alcohol and we had to fill that gap. This is one of those gaps that we need to fill, as far as with the ordinance.
We discussed this in the work session, this is like a mobile truck from, that's selling alcohol?
Mm-hmm, a mobile bartender, basically.
But like I said, in the work session, there has to be something in the ordinance.
And that's what this is.
That has to be put in there. Right now, the ordinance only allows for non-alcoholic beverage sales.
Yeah, that's what we're making amendment on. That's what we're changing. You asked me about this a couple of months ago, so that's what we're moving on.
You want to move on the ordinance first, or her application?
On the ordinance first.
Okay, so we want to do this. Okay, we, let's put before your ordinance amended section 6-493, permitted merchandise to food truck vendors.
All right.
Mr. President, we have a couple of questions over here. They're wanting to understand where, I explained it's not food, but where are you parking? We know it's in the entertainment district, but you're going to the, like, you were at the riverfront this past weekend, but where else, where are you parking other than that?
Well, the state only allowed me to do the entertainment district.
So we got to stay downtown, correct?
Yes.
Or Cloverdale?
And I think there's specific locations.
It has to be in designated spaces. We designate the parking, and I think there are only a couple of parking places, and they're located in the downtown entertainment district.
Mr. President, Ms. Bell, would it include private locations, though? Because I know sometimes, like with food trucks, they're supposed to park. Cuz I know sometimes, like, with food trucks, they're supposed to park in the food truck spots near, like, Rotary Park, for example, but if, uh, the gas station by the region sometimes has the smokehouse barbecue, cuz it's their private property, would they be able to use private, or they, this, or alcohol would only be able to be served in the food truck, designated food truck locations?
In the entertainment district.
If they're operating outside the entertainment district, they're not supposed to sell alcohol.
Even on private property, even if they're invited to?
I don't know that we, I, I haven't looked into, but I don't know that we can control what they do on private property.
Well, that would be my biggest concern, right, is that I own, you know, a, a building, I have a small parking lot, right, and then I wanna have a big party, and then rather than getting a special event liquor license issued through the city and through the ABC, that I call a mobile, uh, vendor up and say, hey, you can come park on my property and sell booze. The issue with that is that it's, my, my concern, we just got done talking with abusive licenses, that then that gives people the license to find private property owners that are willing to essentially hold parking lot parties with alcohol.
Still have to be in the entertainment district, correct?
Correct, I don't think she can actually sell outside the entertainment district. She can't sell alcohol outside the entertainment district.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm...
I think the thing that, that brought this before the council, she owns, like, one of the first of its kind in Montgomery. And so when it brought it to Montgomery, we talked about doing it, and she started operating, and it was like to be changed within the ordinance to allow a mobile truck to sell alcohol.
Yeah.
That's why we're trying to make the amendment to our ordinance to authorize her to be able to do the things that she was doing. Uh, thing Ms. Johnson said this past weekend, she was down at the Riverwalk, she was on those things with that truck that gave some other activities or annuities to the city to, to do those type things, and that's where the change came about, that's what this is all about.
I know, I just wanna make sure.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion on the floor, this is...
No, sir.
We don't?
No, sir, we don't.
Alright, so we do, discussing now the discussion. Alright, need a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, oh, wait a minute, seven. I have one, no.
I mean, we're not voting on changing, and I'm in, in, in a society case, and I'm just gonna speak on this for a minute, cuz this young lady and this operation has been operating within the city of Montgomery for sixty-seven months. This is something that we sent to the legal department to get a classification, cuz it was operate within the city. The question was answered, my thing is, if you, you don't understand it, you can suspend the rules and vote no. You don't have to support it, and I'm not telling people what to do. We hold up operations and businesses within this city because we don't understand it based on our vested interest. So if you don't understand something, just vote no. So you're on the record saying, no, don't hold up business, and we talk about, we wanna grow this city, we wanna do these things, wanna be cute and unique with, with conference centers and all these type things, but a legit business, we hold it up because we don't suspend the rules.
Mr. President, I do think that the use of suspending the rules, excuse me, the use of suspending the rules in this gives me the opportunity to get some of the clarification I need to feel good about voting. I don't wanna hold up any business, I don't wanna...
Well, you just held it up.
I, because I'd like, when something gets dropped, excuse me, when something gets dropped in the last, in the, right before a council meeting, I wanna have the opportunity to reach out to the authorities to understand exactly what we're authorizing here, making sure we understand what we have to obtain in order to move this thing forward. I wanna make sure we're doing this right.
Okay, I, I understand that, I just said what I had to say. Alright, we moving forward. We didn't get suspension of rules. So on item fifteen?
Item fifteen, application for a mobile transport venue with alcoholic beverages, doing business as Thompson's Drink and Eatery, with no physical location.
Motion to suspend rules?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Okay.
Motion to adopt?
Need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Eight.
All opposed, have the same right?
You abstain, Mr. Grimes. You abstain, too? That's gonna be seven with two abstentions.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitch?
Stacy, I'm, I'm, I'm confused about, so we passed her to not sell, what, what did we just do? We passed, so, since we did not change, make amendment to the ordinance? So we just passed her to have a lic- license not to sell alcohol? That's correct.
But she's, but she's still got to come before you for her liquor license. So at this point, she can't sell liquor, cuz she doesn't have a liquor license.
She can't sell it, she can't move a truck, cuz we just voted that down. So let, let's move on.
Item sixteen, application for multi-purpose center...
Thank you, good luck with your business, come back and see us.
Slash conference center, doing business as the Gallows, six thousand one, Monticello Drive. Did you say you wanted this one carried over?
No, carried over.
Which one?
Sixteen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, carried over.
Okay. Seventeen, application for lounge retail liquor class one license, doing business as Sugar Rays, thirty-four, thirty-nine, McGee Road.
Alright, representative for Sugar Rays, please come forward. Say what? Your name for the record, sir?
Patrick Powell.
Alright, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. CNN and Claire, properly for the, the public hearing has withheld this property for the council, a motion?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Go ahead.
It is, he is breaking mobile, you're not mobile, right?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Motion to suspend the rules? All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Thank you.
Item eighteen, application for retail beer and retail table one, off premises only, doing business as Lyons Pride, ten sixty-one, Eastern Boulevard.
Alright, representative for Lyons Pride, please come forward. Your name for the record, sir?
Elpech Patel.
Okay, you signed up, okay, okay, Mr. Patel. This is a public hearing, anyone like to speak for or against this item, please come forward. CNN and Claire, public hearing has been held, this property for the council, need a motion?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt?
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, appeal of proposed demolition of an unsafe structure at twenty-one thirty-eight, this east fifth street in Oak Park.
Alright, Mr. Paul Felder? Paul Felder? Alright, you need to move forward. So he asked for an appeal, so we already voted on it, so no action taken?
You have to act on the appeal, either uphold the appeal or deny the appeal.
Alright, go ahead.
Mr. President, motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to deny.
Hello?
Motion to suspend the rules?
No, you don't have to suspend.
Don't have to.
I don't know, okay.
Either uphold or deny the appeal.
Motion to deny.
Deny the appeal.
Have a motion on the floor, now, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Ms. Roberts wanna tell us something?
Good evening, council members, we have spoken to Paul and given him an extension, so it was no need for him showing force to appeal this.
You denied it, now you wanna tell them?
Yes.
Alright, so we need to repeal that?
No, no, Cece, we can...
Y'all just work it out.
You can leave, yeah, you can leave the denial, and if he does, then he can, they do what they wanted to do.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Item twenty, appeal of assessment of abatement of nuisancees, um, by, this one was withdrawn, I'm sorry, council. Item twenty-one, resolution designating nuisance abatement agents.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Twenty-two, resolution assessing the cost of demolition of various locations.
Move to approve.
Didn't you have a resolution in front of you of this one, sir? Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Twenty-five, pursuant to section eleven fifty-three-one, Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at the listed locations.
Move to uphold.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item twenty-four, resolution declaring authorizing and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
Move to approve.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Need a motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted. Mary Phelan Jackson, to address council regarding drainage problems in Macedonia.
Alright, item twenty-five, we have Ms. Jackson and Ms. Wonder Parks. Please come forward. Need a motion to suspend the rules?
Hey, Cece, I'll make sure I get Ms. Calhoun.
Ms... Hold on, Ms. Blaylock, before you, before we go to the public communication, we do have another, Mr. Grimes have a ordinance. Y'all hold tight for a second, y'all hold tight, hold tight.
Hold, hold tight, one second.
I forgot, we have one from the floor. Ms. Blaylock, Mr. Grimes, um, on the, uh, event...
Okay, he need, he needs to make a motion to remove it from the table.
Need to make a motion to remove Ms. Calhoun's, uh, conference center from the, from tables.
We have a motion on the floor to remove from the table, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Alright, Ms., uh, representative for the conference center, Ms. Calhoun, please come forward.
Yes, she comes.
No relation that I know, okay?
And for, for those that don't see it, it's, uh, a business, application for a business license for Stacy Calhoun, doing business as Rain Two, the venue at one seventy-one, Eastern Boulevard.
Alright. Mr. Grimes?
Ms. Calhoun, so you would, you can switch to an event center and still close it by eleven?
Yes, sir.
Now you gotta get liquor liability insurance?
Yes, we're working on that now.
Okay.
Alright.
I'm good with that, as long as we do that?
Alright, have a motion to suspend the rules?
No, sir, we just need to adopt, cuz it was taped.
It was on tape, okay.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Alright, good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes.
You're welcome.
Alright, uh, Ms. Phelan, Jackson? And Ms. Mary, I mean, Ms. Minister Wonder Parks?
Oh, man.
You got thirty seconds. Come on, Claire, man.
We, the Macedonia community, would like to thank this council, our Honorable Mayor, for allowing us to address you this evening. Those with the Macedonia Community Association who are here, could you please stand at this time? Any members from the Macedonia Community Association?
Thank you.
Yeah, they are.
The agenda item this evening, uh, that Councilman Mitchell added to the agenda, he requested for me to speak on behalf of the Macedonia drainage problems in the area. Uh, to correct that, it's actually the Macedonia Neighborhood Improvement Project from the year two thousand. I believe Mrs. Blaylock was an employee of the city at that time, I believe, uh...
So was Mr. Genright.
Council, Councilman Genright, he was here at that time.
Nineteen seventy.
Seventy-five.
President Eisenhower.
He can't be that old.
No, it was started by Councilor Cook, Willie Cook, started the project, District Two.
And, uh, our community understands that elections have consequences. That's something we should all understand at this point in time in our history. Elections do have consequences. When Mayor Bright's administration came in office in two thousand, uh, he looked at, uh, eliminating blight in those areas that had been historically, uh, denied access to basic city services. Uh, here we are twenty-five years later, and the Macedonia community still is experiencing blight and lack of certain city services that would make our life much more safe and healthy in our community. We would like to commend our Councilman Mitchell and County Commissioner Ziegler for setting aside funding to address the stormwater and drainage issue, which our previous president of the Macedonia Community Association, uh, I believe has, you know, our current Vice President, Mr. Thomas, has some pictures just showing the impact that this drainage situation has on, uh, our, one of our churches, the Macedonia Baptist Church, our ancestors in the cemetery, uh, their graves are flooding out. That's the church parking across the street from the church that we also utilize as a, uh, voting, polling place, it's flooding out. And on the back, he has pictures just showing only two properties where homes are located in the community, and the standing water, and what the residents, uh, have to endure. Some have to use a boat to get to their home. It's a joke, but it's true. With that being said, Councilman Mitchell and I, at the end of April, we attended a team's online meeting with a representative from Levitate, which I think you all are familiar with, they were helping you all with the ARPA funding, and she mentioned to Councilman Mitchell and myself that there were some things that we need to do, like address our city, state, and local representatives, because it's gonna be a, an amalgam of resources, financial resources needed to address this issue. With that being said, I started scratching my head, Councilman Mitchell, because I thought back, Ms. Blaylock and Councilman Genright to two thousand, and that's exactly what the administration did in two thousand, realizing the financial burden on the city could not address a magnitude, a problem of the magnitude of city sewage which eradicated outhouses in my neighborhood, and eradicated septic tanks in my neighborhood. So those elected officials in two thousand, they had the foresight to realize that it was gonna take city, county, state, and federal, uh, levels of government working together to address those issues. And like I said, here we are twenty-five years later. I wish I was the museum board, they said they've been fighting their issue for one year, but here we are twenty-five years later, and we are coming before you just to ask you, to lead out on this effort. There is only so much Councilman Mitchell can do, there's only so much I can do, and there's only so much, uh, that, uh, Commissioner Ziegler can do independently. But what we do have is, I prepared for you a package just with some examples of how the city attacked this issue, phase one, the sewage project for the Macedonia Neighborhood Improvement Association in the year two thousand. I think the first example, uh, my current secretary has a letter that you also have in your package, which is a letter which shows three levels of government in the state of Alabama, uh, addressing Senator, uh, Richard Shelby to address support for the Macedonia Neighborhood Improvement Project, all four phases. Uh, that was signed by, uh, our previous president of Macedonia Community Association, Mr. Darryl Thomas. It was also signed by our city councilman, at that time, Councilman Willie Cook. It was signed by County Commissioner District Two, Lynn Galloway, and State Representative District Seventy-Five, Greg Rinn, and Senator District Twenty-Six, Charles Langford. So that's just an example of how different level of governments can come together to address a problem of this magnitude and not have a strain on the financial burden of any one level of government. And if you notice, I think your second example has a letter which I personally wrote myself to Senator Shelby requesting support for this project as well. I think Darryl had that one, yes, and that was in, uh, March of two thousand and one. He replied within a month later, in April of two thousand and two, stating that his office would keep the Macedonia Neighborhood Improvement Project and, uh, the Appropriations Committee and support the funding of the Macedonia Neighborhood Improvement Project. So once again, we're asking for leadership from the city of Montgomery to get this support from all levels. Like I said, I'm retired, I have the time to do it, but I don't have the expertise or the stamina to do it. But I think if we all could work together, we could definitely eradicate this problem within this, within, uh, the Macedonia community. And I'm sure we're not the only community that's having drainage or stormwater issues, but the magnitude that we're having it, and the safety and health issues that we're seeing, and the safety and health issues that we're seeing, we have two churches in the neighborhood. Uh, I think Macedonia Baptist Church just built their new building less than ten, less than three to five years ago. Our second church in the neighborhood, Old Grove Missionary Baptist Church, they're in the process of, uh, starting, getting ready to start construction on their church. We have the Willie Cook Community Center located in area. We'll have children running throughout the neighborhood, throughout the community center this summer, utilizing that facility, and we have our residents who are becoming older and older, and we've been in the city of Montgomery since nine so when I say twenty-five years, I really mean forty-five years. Uh, I mean forty-five years, and if not now, when? If not you, Mary, if not you, the city council, whom? That's what your community is asking from you. We need leadership, and we need it now. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, Mr. President, um, Mr. Mayor, um, we've been doing this, um, we worked with Kipitake. Uh, we did have some ARPA dollars, but, um, when we lumped them in, we lumped them in for some city sewage. It was only maybe three houses that did not have, um, city sewage, so they kinda got pushed out when it came to, um, sending some money towards, um, them for that project, but I've been reaching out to ADECA, um, I have reached out to, um, everybody that you can think of, and I just need the support of this administration for you, Mr. Mayor, to help me reach out, because they need some resolve in Macedonia. I will not stop, and I just don't wanna move no dirt for me. I just don't wanna put one pipe and just say, I moved a little dirt, and, um, I mean, Mr. Kipitake talked about that. I wanna really do something in Macedonia. So Mayor, I'm asking you and this administration to support us on this venture.
We can do that. I think the other question is, what can the Water Authority do? Again, you know, you guys have the appointment power to those that are on the Water Authority. They're sitting on a whole lot of money, more than what we got here at the city, um, and I think that, uh, Montgomery Water Authority ought to be asked, what have they been doing for the last forty-five years? So, I mean, those things predate, uh, you know, a lot of things we're talking about here tonight, but as we've discussed over the last weeks and months, uh, we've got authorities in this city, appointed by the city council, that are not pulling their weight, and you cannot come to, and I don't mean this to you, but everybody comes to the city council, um, I just saw Birmingham has a five hundred million dollar, five, almost a six hundred million dollar budget. Our budget is about three sixty, if I'm not mistaken. So we have to have other partners to assist us, uh, in the type of infrastructure needs that we have, whether it's Macedonia or whether it's, uh, Madison Park and other areas, uh, you know, at the extremes, uh, of the city, both to the north and to the south. And I think that, um, working with our authority will be very helpful in terms of what we can do and how we can leverage state dollars as well. And I think they can be much more active in, when it comes to infrastructure, in light of what's happening at the federal level now, uh, to assist us, given their reserves, given their, uh, ability to dictate where they invest, uh, and certainly given their bonding capacity. So they've got a lot of options to help us with.
So, Mr. Mayor, you know, I love Zoom calls?
Yeah.
And I put all, you know, we put the Water Works on the Zoom call with us, and I let Mary, Mary did, and Ms. Jackson did ask that question to Bill, who's, who's the executive director, I think, of Montgomery Water Works, if you can tell the mayor what, what Bill said when you asked him about, about that particular situation.
That's the city responsibility, it's not their responsibility. The city does not do stormwater, uh, and drainage, I believe is what he said.
Yeah, I'm gonna say this, I don't have appointment authority on these, on these boards. If I did, I'd change it. Because you have people who've been kicking the can down the road for decades in this city, and that's why the city in certain parts has not seen the type of development and growth that other parts of the city have. And so when it's convenient, it's the city's issue. When it's not convenient, they take their dollars and they take their power and they use it because it's a quasi-private public entity, which is what all these authorities are. So I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna ask the council to work with their appointments on coming up with what the vision is for this city and stop kicking the can down the road, stop making excuses, stop passing above, and figure out how they can do what's done in Birmingham, what's done in Mobile, and what's done in Huntsville. It's not just the Water Authority. We'll talk about the other ones at another time, but this Water Authority, very, very powerful, very, very influential, very flush with cash. There's a lot that this Water Authority could do that we don't have time to discuss, but I'm willing to talk about it. Anytime y'all wanna talk about it, with what the Water Authority can do and how the city can partner with them to not only, again, bring the level of infrastructure to Macedonia, Madison Park, and other parts of the city, even out to Old Selma Road as well. There's a lot of things in, there's a lot of history behind that that we haven't discussed. So it's not just on the city. Uh, when the city council appoints, those who sit on that Water Authority and those that are on that board have some say so in terms of who the executive director is and what their, what their actions are. And I'd also say this, since we're on this topic, the Water Authority turned down state and federal money when we did have American Rescue Plan Act dollars, refused to partner with our leadership in our local delegation when we could have gone after some federal dollars. The Water Authority turned that down. So I think the Water Authority can come before this city council, they can come before the citizens of Montgomery, and talk about why they have not done that when their city own almost a hundred million dollars cash, if not more. I've been waiting to talk all night.
Now, once again, uh.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Uh, once again, the Macedonia Community Association, what we're asking is for leadership. I don't know what entities need to come together. I don't know what departments need to come together, but we're asking for leadership from the elected officials in this room right now to say that they will step up and lead out on the effort to identify those different departments, those different entities, those different levels of federal government, those different levels of, uh, patrons out there who donate grant funding, uh, to, uh, an issue of this magnitude. So the question we're asking tonight on this agenda is, will the city lead out on this issue to identify, coordinate, collaborate with those different entities to address this issue? And we just want a simple yes or no. Thank you.
Yes, we will do that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mitch.
I'll work with Counselor Mitchell and any other counselor here in terms of the infrastructure needs they have as it relates to getting access to water and infrastructure in their district, one hundred percent.
Yes, ma'am. Your name for the record?
My name for the record is Minister Wanda Parks.
Okay.
As Mary has already said, I mean, first of all, let me just address Mary, President Calhoun, our councilman Mitchell, and this entire council board. I sat here, and President Calhoun, I saw your disinterest in our, our, our needs.
Okay.
But we patiently waited. Last item on the agenda. The can has been kicked down the road. Mary, I wanna invite you to the Macedonia community, not for a photo shoot. Come, walk the streets, talk with the people, see the concerns that we're here tonight expressing. Twenty years ago, I came down here, I stood right here. Bobby Wright was the mayor. I invited him to Macedonia. He came. He didn't come along. He bought the water board. He bought the city officials. That's the only thing we're asking for tonight. It's for Montgomery to do what we say we are. We say we're one Montgomery, but see, um, Councilman Pruitt, Sister Johnson, I didn't see you all leave your seats, not one time, when people were coming up here tonight, but when Macedonia came up here, you all were distracted. We did not have your undivided attention. We're just asking for your support. The invitation goes out to you, Mary. I know your plate is full.
I'll accept it. No issue. Always good to come out there.
Help this community. The entire city came together to get sewage and to get rid of the outside toilets in the Macedonia community. We came together. Other councilmen came together to help. Councilman Mitchell, when Willie Cook was in that seat. That's all we're asking for tonight. Come together. We say we one Montgomery. Show it in your actions. Thank you for your time and your patience.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. President, I have one contingency request.
Okay.
For, uh, Councilor Pruitt, fifteen hundred to Montgomery Humane Society and one thousand to AUM Baseball.
Okay. All right, need a motion?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right. On, uh, public communication, uh.